All right. Well, good evening, everyone. It is 6:30, so I will call our meeting to order. And I'll begin with the roll call. John, myself, present. Oh, wait. I guess she's still officially on, right? Rebecca is excused today. Phil.
Here.
Neil.
Present.
Mike.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
And Susan, it did not join us on Zoom. Okay. And alternates Zach Terrell is not here. Michael Bouchard.
Present.
And Peter Julia. So, Michael, I'll seat you as a full member for the evening.
Thank you, Chair.
And next up, election of officers.
Can I say something, John?
You may.
Is Sue zooming in?
Sue said she may zoom in. She's not sure. I mean, she's on vacation for the week, and she said she might try to join us for a little while, maybe.
She wanted to be considered for position. I know she wanted to say a few words.
Okay.
But she wasn't able to make it today. I would propose that we delay the vote till our next meeting.
I also spoke to Sue, and she also confirmed to me that she's open for any of the positions other than Chair. And it seemed like she was fully, from what I spoke to her, she was fully comfortable being nominated in her absence if she couldn't make it.
So I would...
If it plays into your decision, I'm not going to be able to be here at the next meeting.
All right, so I nominate Phil. John has done a super job as Chair for the last couple of years, and I would never want John to not stay on the board. But Phil has done a super job on the board, has waited in the wings. And I would nominate Phil as the Chair and Sue as the Vice Chair.
And do you want to do a full slate?
What's his, Recording Secretary?
Non-Recording Secretary.
John.
Okay. So we have a motion for a slate of candidates, including Phil as Chair, Sue as Vice Chair, and myself as non-Recording Secretary. Is there a second?
I'm not going to second. I'd rather not actually serve as Chair. I appreciate Mike's support. I think John's done a great job, and I would support another motion. I don't have time or interest to do the job that serving as Chair requires, and I think John has been an excellent Chair if he's willing to do it again. I'm going to wait for anyone else to second the motion that's on the table.
I'll second it.
Okay, what's that?
I said I'll second.
You're seconding Mike's motion?
No. I'll second your motion.
Oh. So I hadn't made a motion yet, only because I wanted to...
We currently still have a motion on the table from Mike.
Okay. Can you restate your motion, Mike?
Yeah, the motion was Phil, who is a complete gentleman, doesn't want to seem like he wants to take over, but sometimes that's the best people for a position. Phil has shown time and time again that he doesn't have an agenda just for the best interests of the town. I know he would probably not want to vote for himself, but I would love to see a vote next week. But if it comes down to a vote today that may come in a even vote, it would probably go till next meeting when we have Sue in attendance. So the motion is Phil as Chair, Sue as Vice Chair, and John as Recording Secretary.
Well, I'll step up. And John, I feel you did an excellent job as well. And I'm going to second Mike's motion.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Only my objection.
Do you have interest in continuing to serve in the Chair role, John?
I'd be happy to continue to serve.
I appreciate the nomination. I appreciate the support. I have chaired other planning boards in the past, and based on my experience, it's...I'm not sure I could do as good of a job with the responsibility that John has done in the past. Mike, I appreciate your support. I'm going to ask that the rest of the board not vote for this, honestly.
All right. Well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we turn to the vote? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right. I'm going to jump in with another motion. I'm going to move that we appoint John as the Chair, Sue as the Vice Chair, and I will continue to serve as the Recording Secretary as I have in years past.
Okay.
If I can nominate myself.
Yeah. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? I thank you, Phil. I appreciate the nomination for Chair. And I don't know if anybody wants any feedback from me. I can say to Mike's comments that, I mean, I do have some pretty strong opinions about certain things sometimes. And I also feel like I'm always willing to compromise in the end and find a solution that works for us. And just to mention, like, we just pretty consensually got seven zoning amendments passed this year, and we did with a lot of compromise, including for myself. And I think it worked out pretty well.
I agree.
I agree.
Any further discussion? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so I will...The motion passes. I will remain Chair. Sue will inform is the new Vice Chair. And Phil, you will be non-Recording Secretary.
Thank you.
And yeah, so that's a quick announcement then. As I just mentioned, for those, I'm assuming probably most of you know this by now, but all seven of our zoning amendments have passed by a pretty good margin. And I thank you all for the work that went into that over the past year, members of the Housing Committee and this Board, and of course, Barrett Planning, and members of the public who came out again and again and again for all sorts of community meetings and so forth. So it was a lot of work all around, and I think it was worth it. All right. So on to next business, review of minutes. And that would be from our March 7 meeting. I'll just say these are really well-done and thorough minutes, and I believe Avery had a hand in these.
Correct.
Yes, Avery, who I mentioned last time, is now doing an internship, a state student who's doing an internship with us at Town Hall, wrote some of these minutes, and lots of credit to her, I think. I think she did a great job, and we've been really happy to have her as a part of the team at Town Hall.
Can't wait for Rebecca anymore.
I will move that we approve the minutes as written.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion?
There's still time for amendment if anybody sees anything wrong. But we've got a motion at least.
It is a lot to read.
It is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Stain.
And abstention. All right. And two abstentions, thank you. All right, the minutes pass.
Can I ask from the...
Or approved, I should say. Yeah.
Getting back to seating of members for the Board for the year, has the Select Board...
We haven't made a decision yet.
Okay. So you're here for now, but that may change depending?
I'm here tonight.
Thank you. I hope you'll continue to serve with us.
I probably won't go too far.
All right, thank you.
All right. Are the communications received, Joseph?
Yeah, that actually is a good segue into other communications. So there are, I believe, three nominations for Planning Board members on the Select Board's agenda on Monday. And there have been Michael Bouchard, Peter Julia, and, oh, and the third one is Stephanie Halter, who's asking to be reappointed to the Zoning Board. So those will all be on that agenda. And then Bradford Puffer was appointed and sworn in as an alternate for a term starting in April, as has Matt Yeton, as a full member. So lots of new appointments, some coming before the Select Board and some already before the Select Board.
Was Stephanie Halter applying to be seated on the Planning Board?
The Zoning Board.
Zoning, okay, thank you.
For a second, when you said like, three people are applying for the... I was like, oh, my God.
Yes, no, I...Yeah, I was counting Stephanie Halter's appointment letter.
And two reappointments.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, so up next, we have applications and public hearings. And just to remind everybody about the process here. So to go through this process, we will hear from the applicant after I introduce the application and then look over the application and determine whether we can accept it as complete. And then if we accept it as complete, then we'll turn to the next process of going through it for whether or not we want to approve it. And we'll have a public hearing, so members of the public can answer or ask questions and voice their opinions about things that come up. And then we'll have our findings of fact and our vote, which we may not get to all tonight, but that will be the whole process. So first up, we have a site plan review for parcel 209023, a new hotel pavilion. Application for site plan review from Warren Lewis on behalf of AR Lodge LLC to construct a 28-by-48-foot pavilion to accompany the two existing, the Lodge Hotel Buildings on parcel 209023, 304 Main Street. And that is in the Highway Commercial Zone. And we got the acreage there already. It is 3.16 acres. And is someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? Yes, please come on up.
My name is Warren Lewis. And...
Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm not sure what you want me to elaborate on this, or...
If there's anything you want to tell us, just give us a little background, what we're looking at here, and...
So in this hotel area that we have, this pavilion would be used for anything from wedding ceremonies to picnic area, maybe some corporate events, that kind of stuff. So that's the general idea behind it.
Okay. And we've got the full, your application here and some of the renderings and all that. And will any members of the Board have any questions before we start digging into this? Okay, so we'll just take a look at this for a few minutes and...
Thank you.
I think the staff summary is fairly concise. You know, we have a plan that shows the depiction of the location and size relative to the rest of the site. You know, I think there were a couple of questions that were raised regarding additional water and sewer capacity. But, you know, I think that it seems to me like the application, considering the scope of the project, the application has sufficient information for us to consider this tonight. We have discussed in the past being more rigorous about reviewing checklist items before we accept an application. I just, I wanted to remind us all that this is the time to make sure that we have everything, because once we accept it, we're bound by the timeline. And if we think we need more information, this is the time to ask for it.
Thank you for the reminder. Yes. It looks pretty straightforward to me. And we have waiver request explanations. It's not a full letter, but I think these are all pretty straightforward anyway for the non-applicables on the list.
I will move that we accept the application as complete.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Mike?
Okay.
Feel good about that?
Yeah, I'm actually... To address the Board, I've got to take the rest of the time off today due to surgery, major surgery yesterday. So I will...I'll see you next meeting. Does that sound okay? Can you still vote?
Yes, we can. We have a quorum, and thank you very much for coming in and joining us, and best of luck.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye.
Hope you recover quickly.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so the application is accepted as complete. So at this point, we'll look a little bit more in depth and potentially ask some more questions about the application. And, you know, a lot of it does look pretty straightforward. It's not a huge project. In terms of use, this would seem to be an accessory use to the hotel. And that should be absolutely fine. The department reviews look pretty good. We have the Plymouth Village Water and Sewer. So can you confirm there's not going to be a necessity of water or sewer hookups there?
Nope, we won't be adding any water or sewer, anything like that.
Okay. And...
You have restaurants that are available right near the...
We do. In the building adjacent to it, there are existing restaurants that we would use.
And the pavilion, so you'll pave under the pavilion or have some kind of impervious surface?
Under the...It would be either brick pavers or like bluestone pavers, sort of like that.
And it wouldn't necessarily go much beyond the actual pavilion? To expand too much square footage or anything? No? Okay.
So it's not going to have the foundation for frost wall?
No, it would have sonotubes for the piers.
I was going to say, it looked like there were sonotubes on the plan.
Generally speaking, we asked you to come up to the mic to talk. I've been kind of lax myself not asking you to.
Okay, you've got one question.
So it's on me more than you, but...
Can I ask, would you expect, as noted in the departmental review, there was a pavilion built for Local Foods Plymouth recently on the same parcel? Do you expect any of the overflow to fall into... From Local Foods Plymouth to fall into this, or...
No. That building is for their co-op of some sort.
Yeah.
They basically store their food there, and they come in once a week or whatever it is, and they pick up what they've pre-ordered.
Okay.
Have any effect on this at all.
Not that that would be a problem. I was just curious if they were doing so well that they needed more space.
Nope, nope. They're two independent structures.
Great.
Do we want to have any further discussion right now? Or should we open a public hearing?
I feel confident.
Okay.
Do you want to go to public hearing?
So it is currently 6:51, and I will open the public hearing. If anybody has any comments or questions, please come up to the podium and go ahead. Anybody?
This is Kevin.
Yep.
This is Kevin Tishon on the property of our...
Hi.
Eric Johnson. Just a question, as far as I'm trying to determine where the location is going to be. It looks like it's closer to our property than the Lodge, and I'm wondering, is that...There's a big tree there that's... It's a great tree. Is that going to be taken down? Or is it going to be built on the...next to the tree?
So I think the tree that you're referring to is in that center where the grassy area is. There's one big tree there. We may have to remove some of the limbs, but I don't think that is going to be... The idea was to keep that tree.
Okay, great. That's good to hear.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's all I had for a question.
Perfect, thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. And from the depiction that's being shown on the screen, there's still a driveway between the proposed pavilion location and then some undeveloped land. Well, actually, that's where the Local Foods Plymouth Pavilion is, right? Between the Butters' property and proposed development?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
The driveway comes around. There's still a large set of trees and growth and all that stuff between the properties. And then there's the driveway, and then there's that center area. And then there are some various trees in there. And for the most part, we're planning on keeping those trees as much as possible. And I believe the tree that he's referring to, I think, does have some growth that comes out sideways, and some of that would have to be trimmed up to... But the idea is to keep that tree, because it is a nice tree.
Thank you.
It appears that, you know, the plan you've proposed, the sketch does show the appropriate setbacks as well or previous setbacks. I'm not sure if those changed.
I don't believe so in the Highway Commercial.
Okay.
I think it's pretty much in the center of the lot.
Yeah, and the setbacks are shown there.
Do you have a landscape plan?
I would guess we don't have a landscape plan. There isn't much of the landscape aspect of it. Then we're going to pull out some of the grass to put in the... Sonot...Oh, sorry. We'll pull out just...
It's pretty basic what we're going. We're going to pull out the soil and backfill that with some gravel and some pavers underneath. And then that's about all we intend to do there.
We often do ask for landscaping, like schematics in a site plan. But I think this is a pretty minimal addition to an existing site.
Right. The only landscaping, I guess, what we were doing is just where that building is going. We're going to pull out the grass, and then underneath the pavilion, we'll put in the pavers.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public or on Zoom as well?
This is Kevin Tishon one more time. So sorry, just one other one. So is this just...So I understand for use, it's going to be for picnics, for weddings, maybe for pictures, things like that. There's no plan of, like, bands or anything like that there, correct?
I would say there's a possibility that there would be a band there. I wouldn't rule that out. It's a...It's a kind of a function facility with the hotel and all that kind of stuff. So I wouldn't say there's no chance of a band being there.
Actually, can I ask a follow-up on that?
Sure.
If there would be live music, would there be hours that you'd be adhering to for that?
Oh, I'm sure there are, whatever the...whatever is recommended, whatever the town does.
Good, thank you.
I actually have a question for a planner on this. Do we have any kind of event permit that's required for, you know, if they were to have outdoor music that's...
Yeah, we do have a...For events, I believe 50 patrons or more, outdoor events, there is a special event permit that's obtained from the Select Board and the Police Department.
Okay.
So for larger-scale events, perhaps.
I should probably file one.
Including on private property and not just on public property?
I believe that's the case. I can double-check.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any more comments or questions from the public? Okay. It is currently 6:56, and I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board. Are we ready for the findings of fact? Or do we have any more questions before we get there?
I think I'm prepared. I'll offer a finding of fact that this is a proposed outdoor additional enclosed or sheltered space, unheated, unfinished on the outdoor for a hotel facility within the Highway Commercial District. The proposed location meets all dimensional and use requirements.
I will offer that the facility does not require water or sewer. And so, and all, and given that, all the departments seem to check off on this, all department reviews.
The proposed use is in line with the current use of the property.
I agree.
Yeah. So we're adding...I will also add that we're adding impervious surface, but less than 5,000 square feet for a more extensive drainage erosion control plan. And so it's a low-impact project that does not need further addressing for drainage.
I will offer the finding of fact that the applicant has addressed lighting, waste disposal, water well locations, signs, disturbed areas, expansion of water or sewer, and catch basins or drainage features in their waiver requests. Just leave it at that.
No other elements such as parking, landscaping signage is going to change property?
The facility will not infringe on any wetlands.
Point. You ready for a motion?
I think so.
Oh, man, conditions. What conditions do we need? So I have, actually, before I offer a motion, does the Board, how do we feel about development escrow on this? I think it's a pretty light lift, I would... And they're going to have to file a building permit anyway, right?
Correct, yep.
I'm in line...I'm in favor of... I have a hard time justifying a development agreement or escrow on this one.
Agreed.
I would be in line with it, yeah.
Yeah. And is, if the approval is granted, is 12 months sufficient time for you to at least start construction?
Absolutely. If you give us the approval, we'll start ordering material and get right on it.
We've had other projects lately where we've issued approval, and folks have come back after a year and asked for an extension. And sometimes my inclination is, if you think it's going to be two years before you get it going, we can save you the trouble, but...
No, we want to get this started yesterday, if possible.
It's been a long day. I'm like, my head is a little... Is it one year for conditions and two years for active and substantial? So in fact, you have two years anyway to really actually start development, and you're not really going to have conditions probably if things are looking as they're potentially looking.
Correct, yeah. 12 months for conditions and 24 months for active and substantial, by default.
I was going to say, I know I'm tired today. I'm checking myself.
I forget those details myself, actually.
No, and that was the previous timeline was before the site plan regulations changed. It was all 12 months.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve the... I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan with the conditions that all required permits be obtained prior to construction.
Be pretty minimal. Which will be pretty minimal.
Right. But that's just the default, so. And I can't think of any other conditions at this point, so I will end my motion there.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for conditional approval. Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. You're approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Best of luck. All right.
Next one up.
I should mention, as we kind of switch gears here, if you haven't seen already, that our somewhat new site plan review regulations are on the table, and our very new zoning ordinance is also on the table.
I'm glad you pointed that out. I assumed it was both zoning, but now I can grab a site plan.
And hopefully, in a couple of months, we'll also have a new subdivision regulation.
The trifecta of documents.
All right. So up next, we have a site plan review for parcel 213014, new commercial residential building, application for site plan review from Hess Engineering and Construction Consultants on behalf of YTN TMH LLC to construct an approximately 6,000 square foot building with commercial space on the first floor and two dwelling units on the second floor, along with associated site improvements. Site improvements are proposed to support a potential future phase two building on parcel 213014 Yeton Road. So this is near, this is on Yeton Road, near Penny Mountain Highway, in the agricultural zone, 3.97 acre lot. And with that, and your, look at your setup, welcome. If you'd like to introduce yourself and the project?
Yep, my name is Will Hess with Hess Engineering. Our project propose, consists of two phases. Phase one is the only thing we're here to permit today. It consists of a 6,000 square foot, two-story building. The first floor will be commercial space used for the office of Comfort Keepers. The second floor will consist of two apartments, two bedroom, two bath. We will come back for approval of phase two when the time comes, but we want to get phase one started and move on from there. Phase one consists of 20 associated parking spots, which is maximum, we're allowed 125% of the 16 per the town's regulations. We do plan on bringing the area to grade for phase two. The reason for this is both environmental and economical. We can use the dirt excavated on site, leave it on site, not truck it off, and also not have to import new dirt when the time comes to build phase two. So that'll all be brought to subgrade, but the phase two parking area and the building pad will be left unpaved on concrete and not parked on, so it's not to abuse the town's regulation on parking. Our sewer, we plan to run gravity sewer and tie into an existing town manhole on Yeton Road. I have spoken with Jason today, and as stated in the plan notes, we do anticipate there's a force main that runs through the property that no one's 100% sure where it is, so the plan is to excavate that up first, get good shots on it, and then if we have to tweak sewer at that point, we'll work with Jason to make sure everything aligns and we're meeting town sewer code. Obviously, we will pull the town sewer permit prior to any installation of sewer. The building's water will be serviced by a private well. And both, both buildings will be serviced by one well, and for the sewer and water, we will stub across the parking lot and cap it, so it's not have to rip up an existing parking lot when phase two does come before the board and hopefully gets approved and built. Drainage will be controlled by a series of catch basins and swales and will enter a detention pond to the west of the building. The detention pond has been designed to, to accept not only the flow from phase one, but also phase two, so when we build phase two, we won't have to disturb an already established pond. The pond is designed to reduce the offsite flow for the two, 10, 25, and 50-year storm per the town code, and the berms also will not breach in 100-year storm, which is also town code. Power will be serviced through underground power from the pole currently located at the proposed entrance to the parking lot. We will work directly with the power company to ensure that all their codes are met, and we have ample power for the site. If upgrades are needed, we'll, we'll coordinate directly with them. There is proposed coupla on the building that will not be used for human occupancy. It might stick a foot above the 35-foot, but per town code, we are allowed to do that as long as there's no human occupancy. Lighting will be provided by building-mounted downward-facing cutoff lights, which is ample for this particular use, and also will reduce, not for any light pollution for the surrounding area. We are required to get an NHT, NHDOT driveway permit. This has been submitted, and we do expect an approval anytime now. Yeton Road uses the old 25, and it is, it'll still own by the DOT. We do have a minor dredge and fill, or a minimum, that has been submitted by Stony Ridge Environmental, that it is a minimum, so it's a quick turnaround. We expect that approval any day now as well. Other than that, you know, all the permits have been submitted, not all are in yet, but we've, we've put forward a, I think, a great design that meets all the town requirements, and we appreciate the board's time to hear this. And at this point, we'd just like to open it up to questions and hopefully acceptance of the application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So looking as, so as far as landscaping, these are new trees you have here, I think, right?
Uh, no, they're, sorry.
Are these existent trees?
Yes. Yep. And then our, we do have a landscaping plan. The intent for landscaping is to loam and seed, obviously, everything, have a nice lawn. And then we've kind of, we have left it slightly open for the owner to, she wants to plant in front of the building, but she's not sure what she wants yet. She wants to make sure it matches her landscape, her, so I'm guessing some evergreens, some flowers. Those are to be decided by the owner once the building is.
Glad you have some overall landscaping with some details to be filled in at the, yeah.
Oh, and erosion control has been addressed as well, silt fence, obviously, in all low lying areas. Any slopes over three to one will be matted until stable with a coconut mat that's biodegradable, obviously, just so it's a pain to go pull all that plastic out.
Thank you for the very thorough presentation.
You're welcome.
Trying to go through this, I'm not seeing anything missing from the complete application yet.
Above the 100-year floodplain?
Yep, yep, so we actually can.
You're not going to fill in?
No, we have no, we're working wholly above, so the 100-year floodplain, just after the grading plan.
Not going to go down into the floodway at all?
We have, we have no desire to play that game. So the 100-year floodplain runs around this, this line here, comes down like this. Hence the reason for this retaining wall, so we didn't have to fill into the floodplain and stay out of it, comes around, so there's absolutely no work being done within the 100-year floodplain.
Going to use a Z plate in the retaining wall?
Uh, retaining wall will probably be some sort of large block.
Oh, Allen block.
Allen block, or, you know, to be decided at the time of construction, what works.
Ready rock.
Yeah, ready rock, Gilbert, Stone Strong, Allen block, whatever fits best with the building and the, and the landscape to, to give it that good look.
How high will the wall be?
Uh, the highest point of the wall, I think, is six feet. We have a chart.
You put your stamp on it?
Yeah, and the wall, and those wall designs actually get designed in-house by their structural engineer as well. Looks like seven feet is our highest point, which is right there, is the highest point of the wall, is seven feet, and it drops off quickly from there.
I just want to say two things right now. Just remember, at this moment, we're looking for the completeness of the application, and so some of it goes a little bit beyond that, but they're all important questions still, and we'll get there anyway. And I also want to say for any of my students out in the, if you want extra plans, there are some up here, if you want to come and grab one.
There are full-size sets with the board.
Yeah.
You can un, un, rubber band and share.
Oh, these here, yeah.
You guys want one over there? You're good.
All right. This is looking pretty good to me so far. Anybody have any questions about completeness?
My only question, the applicant mentioned 125% parking. Did we just change that? Or is that only in one zone?
The change was related to, so there was, it used to say if you have greater than, less than, or equal to, or you can't have greater than, less than, or equal to 125%. Now it says you can't go over 125%, but it got rid of the part about.
And that sounds like that's what you guys were planning on?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
And you have 100, no more than 125% as per your, which might be getting us to part, like the actual, like approval part, but as per what you've built out so far, or as per the whole project?
As per what we've built out so far, hence the phasing plan.
Okay.
So we're going to do 20 spots here, we're allowed 16, so we get that as 25%. This portion of the parking lot will be left gravel, but not parking, and the only reason for that is this is our dumpster, so that at least gives them access to the dumpster. I felt, we're going to build it out because we need the cuts to fills, it makes sense not to truck it offsite, so it didn't make sense not to put the dumpster where it's going to be permanently anyway. So we'll leave that, but it will be no parking. This is on the site plan we threw up. This is going to be flagged as no parking, so we have our 20 spaces. It makes sense to leave this portion gravel, so we'll pave it, do a ten-stripping, no parking when we build phase two, then we'll get our allotted 56 total.
Okay.
So we're ready to put in exactly what's allowed, the 100% of what's allowed, once phase two gets going.
Makes sense. And what do you plan, is there, have you identified an area for snow storage?
Snow storage?
Throwing slope berm. For our snow storage, we're going to end up pushing back over here to the 100-year floodplain, and we'll be able to push off the berm over here.
That's what, I was wondering if that was, how that was going to work with your retaining wall?
Yeah, and I mean realistically, until phase two is built, that's all snow storage.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
How do we feel about completeness?
I don't want to have all the fun here, guys. Somebody else want to make a motion?
Make a motion that the application is complete?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, that the application is complete. Any further conversation? Discussion? Nope. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Accepted as complete. So now we go on to the next phase and talking about approval. I do have a question, and it's not, doesn't really kind of hinge on whether or not you necessarily get approved here, but do you have a timeframe for phase two, or is that kind of open in the air still?
My name is Wes from Hollis Construction Management. Sorry about my voice. Yeah, so we're going through building design now, we're expecting the building design to be complete by, at the next month for the first building. The second building, we plan to start design mid to end of the summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I was going to say, for what it's worth, I, I looked at that parcel with somebody who was interested in buying it a couple of years ago, and it's a tough one, and I think you've done a good job of developing what's there. You know, from, from a land use perspective, I think you're making the most of the possibilities on that parcel, so.
It's a hard 3.5 acres.
Right, right.
The soils are good.
And so the commercial space is going to be?
Comfort Keepers.
Okay.
Who are currently in the strip mall next door.
Okay.
She would like to build her own office, own her own space, and have the apartments upstairs.
So both permitted uses?
And I really like the idea of mixed commercial and residential. You know, I'd like to see more of that. There, there are a couple of examples of that along Tenney Mountain Highway now, but it's a, from my perspective, it's a great way to incorporate some affordable housing. And, you know, the nice thing for, for the commercial property, it affords some security knowing that there's, you know, residents upstairs that, you know, there's less concern about an empty building at night, knowing that there's somebody upstairs.
I guess one of my questions for the board would be, how do we feel, where is it? We have, we have a stormwater management report here. Looks pretty extensive. How do we feel about going with this versus having our town's engineer to have a crack at it and have a look to put us at ease?
I would like to have our engineer review the application.
Do you have a SWIP?
I don't think we hit the SWIP, but.
You have more than an acre?
Um, I don't think we have more than an acre of disturbance.
According to the report, it's under 3,000 square feet, which would be under an acre.
That's the wet.
Well, that's the wetlands impact, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. You're, you're right. I read more closely.
I do think we're under an acre in disturbance, but if not, a SWIP would have to be generated. That's federal guidelines, and you can't get around that.
So if you're under an acre of disturbance, you're okay?
Yep, yep, for under an acre, I think we're at like 43,000, we're close, so, you know.
Calculated your hydraulic flow?
What's that?
You calculated all your hydraulic.
Yep, so pre.
Your flood?
Yep, so for, and I can run through them real quick if anyone is interested. But for our two-year storm, the runoff coefficient was 0.05 cubic feet per second, existing, and proposed is 0.03. For the 10-year storm, it was 0.66, and proposed is now 0.28. For the 25-year storm, it was 1.36, and now it's 0.66. And for the 50-year, it's 2.08, and we're, now we're down to 2.05. So we have reduced the runoff coefficient in all of your requirements for that storm.
That's storage capacity.
Yep.
Infiltration.
Yep, we have storage capacity and overflow. Our overflow is, we are controlled at the pond, so, you know, whatever does breach, obviously, lesson is going now, but will flow to the same exact location in the 100-year floodplain.
Yeah.
And just, just, just to, I think the answer is yes here, but these are level pads, right, where these buildings are going on?
Yep.
Which means, I, I ask only because when we measure height, it's if you're very close.
Yep.
It's the, it's the average height?
Yep.
And this making sure we're, we're on the level, so it's all.
Yep, it's a level pad, and it, there's a level area right around the building, so it's, yeah.
The number's the number, and that's it?
Yep.
Okay. I wouldn't even ask if we're still close.
No, I completely understand.
Do we have any other questions before we go to public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, the, there are 100 pages of stormwater management reports, so I don't feel like we're going to get through that tonight, but I, in general, I'd like to have our town engineer review that at least.
And the, the lighting is proposed to be on the buildings?
Yep.
And that's enough for the fairly minimal parking spaces?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Actually, we have that. So we're going to side lighting, a couple on the back where the decks are going to be for the apartments, and then we'll have on the front as well.
Okay.
Do, are those full cutoff, downcast, or?
Full cutoff, downcast.
Okay. Thank you. The stars are beautiful at night.
Exactly.
We like to keep it that way.
I'm sure the people living in the apartments want to sit on their deck and see them as well, so.
Right.
All right. Are we ready for a public hearing?
I think so.
All right, so it is currently 7:20, and I will open a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak or ask a question, please come up to the podium, or if you're on Zoom, you can unmute and speak. All right, then. It's still 7:20, and I will close the public hearing. And.
Close or continue?
Potentially continue.
My only thought is we should continue the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
And consider.
We can always reopen it to continue, but you're probably right. Might as well do it now already and just keep it going. To continue the public hearing. It sounds like we might be asking for a engineer review.
I would like, yeah, I would like to have.
We're waiting for a wetland survey.
I would like to ask the board that maybe consider.
I would like to ask the board that maybe consider a conditional approval based on us meeting third-party reviews, comments, and concerns, just in the efficiency and.
Okay, yeah, we'll.
Consider it.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so do we have any further questions?
You said you're anticipating a report from the Wetlands.
Yep, it has been submitted, it's expedited minimum, so I think it went in last week. I think it went in last week, so we should know in another, I think it's fifteen day turnaround on that, so we should know in another week. So it would be, you know, that would be obviously be another condition of an approval and. We do have a copy of the report that was sent in, if anyone, we can, if anyone wants to see it quickly.
Oh, the conservation commissioner wanna see it.
Yep.
So you don't actually have confirmation of where the sewer line is yet, but it's definitely there?
The force vein is definitely there, and I just spoke with Jason, everyone agrees it's there.
Okay.
And that's why, when I spoke with Jason today, and we had already put a note in the plan, that the first thing we're gonna have to do after we get everything cleaned up is go looking for it and make sure that our, the location is correct.
That's not an if, that's definitely a definite.
That has to, it's on the note, I mean, that has to be done, Jason has to be there.
Well, I mean, like the fact that it's there, it's not an if, it really, it is there.
Jason's convinced it is, but I don't know if anyone's seen it recently.
I believe it goes right over the old bridge.
It does.
Old bridge there.
Yep, yeah, it goes up the old road, over the old bridge.
Right straight up and.
Yep.
Over to N twenty-five.
And the, Kevin French did the survey, and as we know, he knows the town pretty well. And he has it shown right in the middle of the old road, but no one's exactly sure, two feet left, two feet right.
Sure the water and sewer will find it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and that's just why we're gonna confirm it with Jason and do the test pits with him, to make sure we have that perfectly accurate before we go putting in, digging around foundations and putting in sewer lines.
I, I didn't take notes on everything you were mentioning. I believe you mentioned the, the fact that it's a state road, and you're getting a driveway permit.
Yep, that's submitted to the DOT, that should be a quick turnaround as well, they didn't seem overly. They were a little, when we, I called him originally, he called them, they said, you don't need one, and then we called him, said, the town says we need one, they go, all right, send the application in, I guess.
Okay.
So, we sent them the application, I don't think it.
Nobody wants to claim the road, huh?
Yeah.
And the sewer manhole looks like it's just to the south of.
Just, just to the south, there is.
Across the driveway, but south?
Yeah, 'cause there is another sewer manhole, showing this plan, much closer, right here.
Oh, that's not the one, that was the one I saw, that's not.
No, we have to go down here, because unfortunately that invert doesn't work, it's really shallow.
Okay.
And we just can't, we can't get into it and.
Without a pump, right, okay.
Let's go with gravity.
Yep, always go with gravity when you can.
Yes.
So I'll just mention, since the request was made to do the engineering review as a condition, the one kinda reticence from the board's side on this, I'm imagining, is going to be that on the off chance the engineer comes back and says, no, you need to change a whole lot of things. We've already given you the approval. I suppose we can put in the condition, if we do wanna go that route, that if there are any major changes, that would have to go through a compliance hearing. If we wanna, we haven't done a lot of these. We have our first one coming up like next month, I guess. But it is a possibility. But I just wanna keep that in mind, 'cause if the engineer says a whole lot of changes need to be made, and we've just kinda stamped approved it, and then it's up to like town staff to actually like do the approval afterwards, unless we do a compliance hearing.
Yeah, and the, so the, sometimes the way those conditions might work is if the condition says contingent on third-party review and addressing the comments raised in third-party review, but it, it's, it's up to the board to decide if they wanna see the third-party review comments before saying.
Yeah.
Go with them, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask if we, I mean, I, I guess from a certain perspective, I mean, from our side's a little bit easier to kinda continue the hearing, to get some of these comments back, as opposed to like go through some of the uncertainty of what might happen if we give a conditional approval. I suppose either way, the conditions all need to be met before you can start construction anyhow.
Correct.
So nothing would really be held up necessarily by not getting it right away. In terms of construction.
Only if we missed.
Correct, only, yeah, only if, you know, if we got the comments right before next month's meeting, and we couldn't get back in, and the comments were easy enough to fix, but we couldn't get here, that pushes us a whole month, and I know they're looking for a mid-April start.
Okay. Thank you.
And we, and I don't know how we'd word the condition, 'cause I'm not an attorney, but we could do a condition, you know, minimal comments, but if there is a major change, that would have to do a compliance hearing or come back before the board.
Okay. I don't know how other members of the board feel about this.
I think a conditional approval would be in order.
Okay.
I'm a little, I have more questions, I guess. I, I like to handle things that are pretty straightforward, but I, you know, when it gets to review drainage calculations and, you know, I think the plan looks great in general. I think the, you know, the, the number of details are, that are included are excellent, but I also wouldn't mind having another hearing, you know, giving the public another option to provide input and giving the board a little bit of time to digest the project and make sure that we have covered all of our, our bases for ourselves.
Any other thoughts from anyone?
Well, I will say that no amount of time is gonna let me review that information and know if it's good or not. I'm gonna need an engineer to do that. So I like kinda the idea of give, looking at a conditional approval, pending the town's engineer reviewing the information and giving it its go-ahead, and as we said, if there's no major changes brought by the town engineer, then I think that seems more reasonable to me, because we could, they're mentioning they're trying to start by mid-April. I think that's what you said. Sometimes these things, I'm not sure what the engineer's schedule is, when he gets it back to them, then they're, they may not be back in here until second visit in May, potentially.
Can I ask a question, Joseph? If we gave the, we don't sound like we're all speaking with the same voice here necessarily at the moment. If we did give a conditional approval, is there language that defines what major changes is as opposed to not major changes?
If the board wanted to have one scenario where it comes back and one scenario where it doesn't, that would need to be sort of, the board would need to decide in the condition what that is, I would think.
Yeah.
You could, you could come up.
Could I make a recommendation on what a major change would be versus what wouldn't be?
Or we could, we could potentially deputize planner, which, we don't normally like to put that onus on the town planner or the chair, and I don't necessarily wanna have that onus on myself either. But that is an option as well, to determine like, hey, this needs to come back, or this does not need to come back. And I'm not necessarily asking you all to do that to me, but which is, which is why in some ways, to avoid some of those difficult sticky questions, the continuation from our perspective is a little bit easier. And obviously, I understand why from your perspective it would not be. And it's mostly, you know, it's just our obligation as members of this board to protect the town, that if it does come back and it doesn't quite look right, and the process gets kinda murky, no pun intended with the water and all, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, we have a clear process in place for address that, for the town's sake.
Can I ask a general question? Is there any sense of what phase two may be, or is it just open to any appropriate type of commercial?
Um, I, I think right now the intention would be a similar use as the.
Mixed commercial residential.
Yep, yep, yep. I mean, that's definitely open to interpretation as we get through the summer, but that would be, that's the goal, that's the goal now, yep.
And for this, and for phase two, to get ahead of ourselves a little bit, you wouldn't be adding any additional impervious surface?
No, other than the structure itself, but that's shown, yep.
So whatever we'd be putting in now would cover runoff for both phases?
Yes, yeah, so we're designed to cover everything for both phases. This will be left gravel, because that's stable, so, you know, you don't wanna leave it just in natural soil that we fill with. It will be left gravelled, 'cause that's considered stable per DES regulations. So again, there's no, and gravel's already impervious, so there's nothing gonna be added or changed once phase two comes. What we'll be approving is just the use in the building.
No, it seems like you're making all logical choices, I just wanted to double check.
Absolutely, thank you.
Which is why we'd love to start the site work soon.
All right, so, I can't stop you.
I move that we give them approval, conditional approval, subject to approval by water and sewer regarding the pressure line, the Wetlands Bureau approval.
Recedable.
For the minor, minimum impact application, and the approval of the town engineer.
I think, I think Phil was giving a good bunch of words there, which will, receiving all necessary permits.
I was just, if you wanna.
It also includes driveway and other things, so you might just kinda lump it in.
Those three specific.
Well, the driveway as well.
Conditions, and the driveway.
Do we want a development agreement?
So the challenge with a development agreement is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm starting a discussion already. Are you done with your motion?
Yeah. I'll second the motion, so it can get into discussion.
Okay.
I, I think one of the challenges I see, if we do a development, if we, if we ask for an escrow and do a development agreement, I think it should be focused on phase one. And that, you know, not encumber the applicant longer than we need to for phase one, if we were to do that. It's kinda hard for me.
I'm not sure we can really even ask for any more than that with the site plan not really even going to phase two.
Right. My, my concern is, without having the engineer's initial comments, it's hard for me to understand, what scope of the development agreement or escrow funds might, might be necessary. But I guess when we've done that in the past, we have just simply said that the applicant will execute a development agreement with the town and negotiate an appropriate escrow to be held for engineering review.
We normally don't come up to that number.
Yeah.
You wanna add that to my motion?
I will amend the motion. To, to add, to require that the applicant enter into a development agreement with the town and provide escrows, escrow monies for engineering review by the town's engineer to ensure that the site development meets the design as proposed.
Right, I, can I also just state, since, again, I can't stop you from making a motion, we have not done findings of fact if we decide to go ahead with this, which we are, should be doing prior to a motion and an approval. So.
Can I just clarify the conditions of that motion? So we're.
Amendment or the motion?
Uh, the motion as amended.
Okay.
So, we have condition of water and sewer district approval and sign off on the sewer line. We have condition of wetlands permit being approved. We have condition of approval of town engineer. Was that also to include the escrow agreement to fund the engineer's review and addressing the comments? Does that clarify that?
I think it was for, my, my intent with the amendment to the motion was that there be a development, that there be inspections during development in, in addition to the engineering review.
So escrow for construction inspection and separately escrow for design review.
Thank you for the clarification, yes.
Thank you. And then the addition, the following being driveway permit approval. Is that, is that accurate reflection?
I think, I think, well, I'll ask Neil, yeah, okay.
Can we retroactively offer findings of fact in support of the motion?
Let's be.
This is a question of.
Oh, of procedure.
Procedure. You're, you're the, you're the king when it comes to procedure.
You know, the find, given that findings of fact only really kinda came into practice like a year ago, we're still kinda figuring out some of those little details. And I suppose as long as we do it before approval, we should be, okay?
Yeah, the really, the, the place.
Ideally, it should be earlier than the motion, but.
Where the, where the state statute really calls for findings of fact is that they need to be provided to the applicant with the decision, so it should be written outlining of the facts that the board considered in making the decision. It actually doesn't procedurally specify where exactly in the, the motion second procedure it happens, but.
So it can happen in, in the discussion of the, of the motion then?
It seems like it can.
Yeah, I don't.
The only thing I would say is we, we can't like offer them post, only because really these findings of fact were supposed to guide our decision.
Right.
And if we're making them afterwards.
They're retroactive, they're kind of retrospective.
Yeah, this, we're just like justifying our decision as opposed to using it to make our decision.
Yeah, the other thing I think about these findings of fact is that they're, they become a basis for appeal too. So if, if we were to deny an application based on, you know, the applicant, the finding of facts would be what the applicant would cite in their appeal to the state land use board.
And if we made the findings of fact after we made a decision, that would look very good in an appeal.
Right.
Anyhow, so I think we can, it sounds like we could probably do it during discussion.
I will offer the finding of fact that they've done a great job developing a difficult site without impacting the hundred-year flood plain.
The site location is a proper use for, for the area that it's in.
Which is the agricultural zone.
Oh, it is ag out there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Past the end of I C D.
Yaton Road is a state highway.
Which is my D O T, has to be the driveway.
So it's move twenty-five.
Yeah. I'll make a finding of fact that the building is under thirty-five feet. And although the cupola will go over thirty-five feet, it has been confirmed that it will not be for human occupancy.
Will you entertain a sidebar question?
Sure.
Isn't the roof structure also not, not designed for human occupancy?
You, you know, I, I.
I mean, can't, can't you argue that from the eve line up?
Can't get to it, yeah.
You could go thirty-five feet to the eve line.
I've actually like.
We would have to put some out there while we're building it.
I think I've made this.
There are inhabited.
I think I've made this exact argument in the past, and I think it's probably a little bit open to interpretation. I suppose in theory you could inhabit it at some point if you wanted to.
They're being conservative in their assumption of the, of the cupola, I think they could.
Well, anyway.
For what it's worth, yeah.
You mean they should have a steeple?
If it's not inhabited, the steeple could be a hundred feet.
I was just gonna say, you could probably go a hundred feet as long as you don't.
There's no human inhabitat, inhabitation.
I'm not having any sex with that.
Doesn't matter what the structure. Pads aren't humans, though.
It sounds like the concerns of Plymouth Village water and sewer being addressed. The lighting looks adequate.
I will offer finding a fact that the mixed-use design of residential over commercial should, should add to our housing base, which is something that this board has been working very hard on over the past year or two to create new housing opportunities, and this is an appropriate, this is a project that does incorporate those in a way we'd like to see more of, so I would like to support it for that reason.
Looks like we meet all setbacks and other dimensional requirements.
Can I call the question? Can I call the question?
So, I, I, I want, I want to, if, if we feel comfortable with those findings of fact, I would like to call us back to the kind of conversation we were having and about whether or not we are comfortable offering a conditional approval this evening, which we do not normally do when we have an engineering review. It is possible to do this, though. It is not our typical procedure. We usually continue the meeting, which is what you had been assuming earlier, I believe. How do we feel about the uncertainty of how the engineering review will come back and what that means for how we, I'm not sure if we even need to reword what Neil said in terms of, I forgot the exact words you used.
If we get a negative report, we'll have to have another hearing.
Okay, so that'll be a compliance hearing.
The condition as written did specify approval by the town engineer.
Okay.
So, that would, I, I think the condition
Yeah.
Said that, that, so presumed, I suppose, within that condition is that
If it didn't, it would have to come back to us.
Well, it doesn't specify that it has to come back to the board because it's conditionally approved, so if, if typically there are some things that are caught, any, the plans look really good, they, you know, but I've never seen one go off to plan review that hasn't had at least something that's the engineers asked to have changed.
Make a suggestion on what a major change would be to require me to come back?
Wait, wait one moment for a second. I, I absolutely am willing to listen to that. I just had a thought in my brain. I wanted to get that first here. In turn, or a question, I guess. In terms of timeline, to get the engineer's review back is typically a couple of weeks?
Typically, yes. Typically, when we've done them for a continuance, it comes back approximately seven to ten days before the next hearing.
Okay.
That's so, I would say that's about right.
I'm just trying to ask myself, like, how much time you'd be buying yourself? So if it came back typically seven to ten days before the next hearing, that wouldn't be a whole lot of extra time necessarily. And if it does come back with any things that need to be addressed, that would give you just enough time to kind of address those and bring them back to us for us to consider them, and I mean, I'm kind of leaning towards a continuation myself, especially given that timeline. It's probably not going to buy a whole lot of time.
And my one concern, just being in the industry, working with K V Partners a lot, is we're coming into a very busy season.
Yep.
So that three-week timeline could easily become five. That pushes us out two months.
Got you, okay.
You know, so, and I just know, just where we are in the year, and everybody's trying to do the same thing we are right now. They serve so many towns. How many of these are they giving after this week's planning board meetings in the twenty towns they service in the state?
So, so I guess we, if we move forward with this, me personally, I'd like to have a little bit of a clarification of that language that says if it comes back positive, as Neil said, then that's the condition. If it comes back negative, even minorly so, what are we asking for? Are we asking for a compliance hearing then at the next public business meeting, or?
I suppose thinking through the language that is before us right now, the language is approval of the town's engineer. So if we assume, so if this is the condition that's placed and the town's engineer does not approve, and there are things about the plan that need to be changed, changes from an approved plan would need to apply under the site plan regulations for a plan amendment. So theoretically, if this condition fails, so if the, you know, the applicant would need to apply for an amended plan, I would, I would suppose.
So I, I guess, I guess what I'm seeing here is a possible, like, I mean, game of roulette in some ways. If it comes back, let's say, seven to ten days before our next business meeting, and it is negative, and we've already given you a conditional approval, I'm not sure we have enough time to actually notice for another public hearing. And it might actually be pushing you back further.
It's a good point. If we continue it, you know, it's, it's only a month and we can, you, we're already noticed, we're already in, you know.
Let's say you get it back ten days before the next hearing. It has some recommendations that need to be addressed. You're going to get another public hearing again, and now all of a sudden, like, there's not enough time to notice for it. So, so this is, this is, this is the gamble. Your drawings.
Third-party review, they're going to have comments. They always do. And that's kind of where my suggestion was going to come in, that if there's a major parking shift, site change to the parking area, a building shift, or if we have to change the pond in any way, shape, or form that changes the design flows that are leaving post, that I would consider a major change. If he says, hey, can we shift this sewer mainhole ten feet this way, that I would consider a minor change and we could continue to move forward.
The other thing, from discussion of the board, I, I think it's, it's hard for us to put this back on the applicant since he's representing his client here tonight too, and we should be making this decision independent of his, of his input. I'm, I'm just trying to protect you as well. You, you have a, a good relationship you're working with, with your client. I don't want to interrupt that.
So we do have a motion and a second still on the table?
And, and that's for conditional approval.
For conditional approval.
We, we will not see them again without rehearing, renoticing.
We will not see them again without renoticing, and it will only be if the plans call for, at this point, as currently worded, any changes. Obviously, we could amend that, as you just suggested.
Upon further thought, can we just ask for a continuance?
As opposed to the game of roulette?
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I'm a gambler on occasion, but not that often. So I just, you know, I think
I know what you mean.
You know, as you play through and we all talk it through, a continuance makes more sense as we don't have to rehear. We're already done and we can just be back in a month.
I mean, the, the cost to notice the abutters is, you know, another, another check to notice all the abutters if we have to come back and do that again.
Next meeting's April eighteenth, so that still gives us, if we, as long as the review comes back in time, we can still be in the ground on April.
Yeah. So do you want to rescind your motion, or?
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate it. You guys talked me out of it. I was feeling good about it.
I will, I will, I will unsecond the motion, so Neil can revoke it.
All right. So before we do continue this, are, do we have any other concerns we want to address tonight to send you off with all the information we can give you? Is the question. So I'll put that back to the
I think the fact that we are willing to consider approval tonight is an indication that we're, we're generally pretty happy. I think we're just waiting for the engineer's feedback. But I, you know, I think it looks like a good design and, you know, my concern is ensuring that the engineer is comfortable that, you know, the rest of the work meets his guidance.
And do you have any questions for us that you might want clarification on before then?
I just appreciate all your time and everyone's input.
Okay.
Very helpful.
All right. Do you want to give us a motion to continue?
I move that we continue this to our next public meet, hearing, which will be April, my calendar won't pop up.
In the meantime, he's going to be working on these.
And we'll try to, oh.
April eighteenth?
April eighteenth.
Continue to April eighteenth.
And we should, I know you just made a motion, ask for money in, for the engineering, and ask for the engineering review. And so you can work that agreement out with the town, yes?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So we have a motion to continue.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Hopefully, you'll have all these ducks in a row when you get back.
Yeah, we get back, all the permits should be in place. We should be, hopefully it's smooth and easy and
Okay.
And barring that, we'll have the ability to continue this hearing and address any changes at the next meeting, and then hopefully we can, hopefully we can have an approval for you on April eighteenth.
So wait, we've still to vote.
I know, I appreciate it. These guys talked me out of it. You guys should be lawyers.
So, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so the hearing is continued, and thank you very much for your time and that you work out some of the details, Joseph, and the town, and we'll see you in a month.
All right, we'll see you in a month. Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
It looks like a great plan.
It does.
Thank you.
We agree.
I've been in construction for fifty-five years. I know what it's like.
Yeah, it's, it's back and forth always, but and Joseph will be in touch.
Sure, I can email you. Do you want H E S to be on the, on the escrow, or do you want that to be Y T N?
Yeah, they'll handle it directly.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I think those are John students. I think it's only the high school students that make signatures.
All right. I don't think we have any informational or pre-application reviews? Is that correct?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any other business from members of the board and planning staff?
All right.
The only thing I would like to say is I would like to offer my thanks again to all the members of the housing opportunity, housing grant committee and town staff on the excellent work they did preparing the changes to the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
How will we use their remaining time?
Tonight?
No.
Oh, we can late.
No, the Barrett, don't we have another few months?
We do, and we have a, we might revisit the overlay that didn't go through. We are definitely going to be looking at the Tenney Mountain overlay and seeing what might or might not be done there. And we have talked about, and I don't know if it'll go forward or not, potentially doing a exclusionary zoning ordinance as well, which if you know anything about them in other states, it's, it's good to know that in New Hampshire, they cannot be mandatory. It has to be incentivized. And that's, I think, what's on our agenda. It's mostly a Tenney Mountain thing, and, oh, and finishing up, of course, which we hope to, hopefully finish soon, our OSRD, because currently they're nowhere. We removed them from the zoning ordinance and we do not have them in these subdivision regulations yet. So we have to get on that and actually make them appear again.
We do have, I'll just let the board know that I don't have it ready tonight, but we are in pre-proposal phase for ten-year plan transportation projects. That's through Lakes Region Planning Commission, and I will be able to give a more detailed update on that at our next meeting. We did almost make it last year with one of our projects into the ten-year plan, and then it, at the last minute, it, it was not included. That was for the North Main Street project. And so I can, I'll, I'll have a more detailed update on that next month, but just to give a heads up that that's the, that's the process by which the state DOT essentially comes up with their ten-to-twelve-year capital improvement program.
And it's worth mentioning that the planning committee, the commissioners' meeting as well, which is next Monday, I think, I think the plan is on the agenda to be discussed, or at least informationally given, like
Yeah.
Learn about it, learn more about it.
That makes sense. I believe, so is that the
I think it's on the agenda.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I was just looking for it. I couldn't find it right away.
Yeah, so the, the previous cycle's ten-year plan is just essentially finalized now. So it's essentially a, it's a ten-year conveyor belt, two years out. So the current one that's being considered is, well, it's no longer two years out. It was when we started looking at it. It's, goes out to twenty thirty-four. The next one will go out to twenty thirty-six. So if the town was successful for a regional priority project, the town would, would essentially get the project completed at no cost. It would just have to go through the process and be designated as a regional priority. And I think we actually, you know, there've been some changes that, or, or some changes in L R P C's policies that I think would be more favorable to the project we submitted last time than were in place at that time, so I think we might have a better shot. But I'll have all the, the sort of details on that next time. I just haven't got a memo together yet.
Speaking of conveyor belts, we can just keep this going for ten o'clock.
It's almost, we're almost done before eight.
Are there any public comments? Oh, come on.
Extra points if you ask questions.
Right, Neil actually offered extra credit to the high school students, right?
Yeah.
Neil might make a motion.
Yeah, extra credit for the high school students?
Well, these aren't high school, these are college students.
These are college students, right? We get, we get high school students as well. They're, they're your students, aren't they?
Yeah, they are.
They're John students from Plymouth State.
Are they, they're college students?
Yes.
I'm so old, I can't tell.
He thinks I'm in college.
All right. So no public comments? All right.
Motion to adjourn?
All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.